Okay, good evening, everybody. It's five thirty, so I'm gonna call the Atomo City Council meeting to order, and if everybody would rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The next item is to approve the consent agenda, part one. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda, part one is approved. The next thing on our agenda is consent agenda, part two. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't approve.
Sorry. Any further discussion? Now, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
The next item is to approve our city council agenda for this evening. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Now, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Okay, the next item, the city administrators report to the council and the citizens of Atomo. So I'll turn it over to Phil Rad, our city administrator.
All right, thank you, honorable mayor. Do not have too much to report tonight. The only thing I wanted to mention is that with being July one, this is the official start of our new fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-six. There will be still some payments that will come through the rest of this month, or closely the rest of this month, that might go against last fiscal year, and the finance department is aware of that, and the staff is so coded appropriately. But we are now in our new budget cycle, and almost a full year of the new software, so we should have some good data. Finance Director O'Donnell has been working on some different reports, and as mentioned during the budget session, he'll be providing some quarterly, and even some monthly updates on some different things, and so we're working on getting some new graphs and visuals to show as part of that, and it's only a regular part of future meetings.
Okay, thank you, Phil. The next item is public hearings. We have four public hearings to discuss. Did anybody turn in any slip for any of our agenda items that they wanted to speak on tonight? We don't have any slips up here. Okay.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the water pollution control facility concrete repairs project.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe our public works director, Philip Brookmeyer, is gonna handle this.
Thank you, mayor. So this project is located in concrete repairs and treatment plants, and Orchard Walnut and Grandview pump stations. There's four hundred fifty thousand dollars left in our concrete repair budget for FY twenty-five. We're targeting a construction budget of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. So after accounting for any inspection, we lowered that a little bit. And then, since this project is being bid in FY twenty-six, a budget amendment will be needed to carry over FY twenty-five funds, so it was budgeted, but since it not started until later, we need an amendment just to carry those funds over. Bids were received and opened by the city of Atomo on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, at two P M. The bid report and bid award recommendation will be presented to the city council at the August fifth council meeting, or later date, as determined by staff. Just got a quick little overview of the project before you guys vote on anything. Location is a primary clarifier at the wastewater plant, and then Orchard Walnut and Grandview pump stations. The project activities, participating about two hundred square feet of shallow concrete repairs, which are between three, four, and an inch and a half deep. Thirty square feet of regular concrete repairs, which are one and a half, or created one and a half inches deep. Fourteen cubic yards of full-depth concrete replacement, which is just, you know, removing or replacing the whole entire wall, or piece of slab. Probably a thousand millimeter feet of epoxy crack injection. Seventy-six millimeter feet of handrail replacement, and then we have rehab of the Grandview wet well as part of the project, too. For schedule-wise, we want the primary clarifier repairs to be done by this fall. That's the driest time of the year, so we can lower flows into the treatment plant without compromising any ability to treat waste. So if we wait until springtime, there's much of a chance it'll be raining out, and we won't be able to make time for the concrete repair. So that has to be done in the fall, and then the remaining work will be done whenever we want to.
Can you explain, you want a primary clarifier, yes?
So the sewage comes into the plant, it goes through the headworks, which screens out any large trash-type items. And we also have some cyclones that separate the sand and grit. And then, once it gets through there, it goes to a big basin, and it slows the water down. And anything heavy in there that takes a little bit longer to sink will sink to the bottom. Anything like that, grease will flow to the top. We have these, like, lights, just big scrapers that go along the bottom and all the top to scrape the the floatable and settleable solid out of there. That's just the first step in treatment. And there's some concrete deterioration in those areas. So this is, so we split it up priorities, in case prices come back higher. When you bid this kind of stuff, when you get stuff drained out and start hammering on concrete, you always find new places to repair. So we made priorities, and our first priority is to get the primary clarifiers done. These are built in nineteen fifty-seven. There's concrete repairs to do here, both full-depth, or both regular concrete repairs and shallow ones. And then there's the epoxy crack injection. There's cracks in the walls that we want to get fixed. Priority two is Orchard Pump Station. This is all built in nineteen sixty-two. Concrete repairs and replacement here as well. And then the handrail, you can see on the left-hand picture, you can see the bottom of the handrail there. So around the wet well walls, there's a handrail on top. We're gonna remove and fix that handrail. Priority three is the Walnut Pump Station, built in nineteen sixty-two. It's almost identical to Orchard, same construction, same, almost same everything. Same deterioration in concrete as well. And so, again, there's concrete repairs here, some concrete replacement, and then a handrail replacement as well. Priority four is Grandview. This is a little more in-depth repairs here, and that's why it's our last priority. There's a concrete lid on the wet wall here, and it's deteriorated pretty bad. Not an imminent risk of collapse, but the fix we had for this was, we thought about just removing the lid and leaving it open, but we think there's some lateral supportive or bicycle walls. So we're gonna remove the concrete lid and replace it with aluminum grating, and put struts underneath the grating to hold the walls in place. The reason it's our lowest priority is because this pump station that we looked at as part of our sewer separation is actually upstream in Blakes Branch drainage area. So if there's not money to fix this now, we'll just hold off, we'll monitor it closely, and then hopefully it doesn't deteriorate too much farther before we can get there with the sewer separation project, but we'll we'll repair it then. So that's why it's priority four.
Any questions?
Phil, when you first started, you talked about money in the bank to do this project. And then, when you ended, it sounded like there isn't money in the bank to do the project. Am I missing?
Well, there's three hundred fifty thousand dollars that we have in the budget that we're targeting for this.
Okay.
It was budgeted for FY twenty-five, and we budgeted for FY twenty-six, thinking it would still be spent in FY twenty-five, but we didn't get the project designed and out the door fast enough to spend it now, so we're just moving the money from FY twenty-five to twenty-six.
Okay.
But it's money we already had budgeted for, and just to spend, you wanted to spend it.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Since this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that have any comments or questions? Okay, if there's no other questions, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
Oh, sorry. Phil. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Resolution number one seventeen, twenty twenty-five, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the water pollution control facility concrete repairs project. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number one seventeen, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation, your honor.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposal to convey certain real property locally known as three fourteen Hamilton Street, Atomo, Iowa, to Manny Martinez.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And I believe Amal, our new community development director, is gonna handle this.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'm here for Jake. He's not here tonight. In regard to this property, staff has received a total of six bids, with Mr. Martinez being highest bidder. And council should know that in such events, we usually do a quick pay, fee, transfer, and with also the buyer paying all associated costs of the transaction. And with this stipulation that the buyer would have to submit a repair plan within thirty days of the purchase date, and complete repairs within six months.
So he's already aware of that?
Yes.
Does council have any questions for Amal?
I do. So because this is the first of, I think, three hearings regarding property, I'm just gonna ask it at the beginning. I'm just wondering, do we have a process that, for qualifications to bid on properties within the city, like, for example, like being in good standings, standing with the city? So not having, like, assessments or things like that?
Apparently, we do not.
Is that something we? I think it would probably be beneficial just to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, and is that something that we could look at and look at developing policy around that?
Definitely. Perfect. Something like that. Thank you.
I think that's a good idea, too.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Amal?
Do you know what he plans to do? Is he fixing this up to live in, or to sell it, to rent it?
I'm not sure, but with this stipulation we have, that they'll have to be repaired within six months.
Six months. So he's gonna upgrade the property regardless of whether he lives over in Church Road, Southwood.
Right.
Is that a good thing?
Yeah.
Any other questions from council? Since this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or comments they'd like to make regarding this property? Okay, if there's no other questions, Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, then I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So move.
Second.
Now, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Resolution number one twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, accepting a bid and approving the sale of three fourteen Hamilton Street to Manny Martinez for the sum of nineteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number one twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the approval.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposal to convey certain real property locally known as eleven nineteen Monroe, Atomo, Iowa, to Jesse Leon.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe Amal, you're gonna present on this as well.
Your honor, same as the previous item, staff has received a total of three bids, with Mr. Leon being the highest bidder. Same stipulation, they'll have to submit repair done within thirty days of their purchase date, and complete repairs within six months.
Does council have any questions for Amal regarding this property?
The only comment I had is I'd like for you to speak a little louder into the microphone, so that I can clearly hear you.
Since this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask any questions or make any comments regarding this property? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Resolution number one twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, accepting a bid and approving the sale of eleven nineteen Monroe to Jesse Leon for the sum of seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number one twenty-five, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposal to convey certain real property locally known as one thirteen North Davis Street, Atomo, Iowa, to Mary Welch.
I'll open the public hearing, and Amal, give us a second, too.
Your honor, the city acquired this property through six, seven, eight process, and before the process was concluded, the property was bought, but she could staff is recommending giving the property back to the owner.
That doesn't always happen, so.
That's what we like to see.
Yeah. Does council have any questions for Amal regarding this property?
So what legal expenses did we incur before this changed direction?
I'm not sure the total legal expenses, but it's an administrative process.
Yeah. Excuse me. I don't have the total amount for this particular property, and we can always go back and look for that, before you get you an answer on that. This is a property that should not have been transferred over to the city. It wasn't completed timely. Unfortunately, I think Jacob mentioned at the last meeting, there was communication fell through, so the attorney followed through with the process before we could say stop. We still would have incurred those expenses prior to that, because we were working through the process as the person brought it up to code. So it's just giving the property rightfully back to them, since they did comply with the timeline. It was at error timing.
Council have any other questions for Amal regarding this property?
Are we going to be responsible on the additional expense beyond, because it looked like it was the city's fault, or our attorney's fault, that this got transferred in and out, so I assume the city is going to pay anything that's above and beyond what the original buyer agreed to pay?
True. Since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments regarding this property? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So move. Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Resolution number one twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, approving and authorizing the conveyance of certain real property locally known as one thirteen North Davis Street, Atomo, Iowa, to Mary Welch. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number one twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve. Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Okay, we have no ordinances tonight on the agenda, so we'll move to departmental board or commission recommendations and reports.
Price quotes for soccer goals at the Legacy Field Soccer Complex. Recommendation approve the lowest quote provided by Anthem Sports for soccer goals on the amount of seventeen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty cents.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve. Second.
Gene, our parks director, I believe you're gonna handle this?
Yes, thank you, your honor. Three soccer equipment vendors were contacted and asked to provide price quotes for new soccer goals, and two quotes were received. The low bid was from Anthem Sports, also known as Quick Goal, for seventeen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty cents. These goals will be used when smaller fields are set up across the normal full-size soccer fields. Both price quotes are attached. The six goals that are currently in the soccer complex parking lot are for the full-size fields. And there is eighty thousand dollars budgeted for soccer equipment in the current CIP.
Does council have any questions for Gene regarding this project? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Purchase of Polaris Ranger UTV for Legacy Field Soccer Complex. Recommendation approve the purchase of a Polaris Ranger UTV from RJ Motorsports on the amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, Gene, I believe you're gonna handle this one as well?
Request for a price quote for a UTV for the soccer complex were mailed to three local UTV dealers, and two price quotes were received. The low bid was for a Polaris Ranger one thousand premium from RJ Powersports for nineteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. The other bid was from, was a John Deere Gator, eight forty-five amps Sinclair John Deere, for twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and zero cents. Staff recommends accepting the low bid from RJ Powersports for a new four-wheel UTV for the soccer complex for nineteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. This UTV will be used for a variety of duties at the soccer complex. There was eighty thousand dollars budgeted in the CIP for soccer complex equipment.
Council have any questions for Gene regarding this item?
So this is part of that, we're taking it from that eighty thousand, so right now we're about forty thousand dollars into our eighty thousand dollar budget. Make a little rest.
We're up to about sixty-six, actually, when you include the more we purchased.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Thank you.
Well, it's a big area. You're gonna service it and do things, you kinda have something to get around, golf cart or something, but this will haul things and...
Exactly. We're gonna use a pull-up sprayer with also. And it may be shared with the campground also, because they currently don't have one, and both employees will be working out in the same area, so it should be very convenient.
Any other questions from council for Gene? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is resolutions, and we have nine of them tonight, so we'll start with resolutions.
Resolution number one ten, twenty twenty-five, approving the purchase of a twenty twenty-five Chevrolet Silverado truck from McGrath Chevrolet in the amount of forty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars for the Atomo Regional Airport. Recommendation passing the doc resolution number one ten, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, and our airport director, J D Wheaton, this is all yours.
Thank you, mayor and council. Three bids were received, their best qualified bid being from McGrath Chevrolet of Cedar Rapids. The budget amount for this purchase was fifty thousand dollars. This truck will replace unit number seven twenty, which is the truck that I use and drive at the airport every day now. We'll go to the maintenance crew to replace the truck that they have that's twenty-one years old. It's two-wheel drive, the floor's rotted out, but they've replaced it twice in the last couple of years. It's got transmission issues, so it's not prepared to go to auction, so we got these bids now. Like I said, the budget amount was fifty thousand dollars. This came in at forty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. So forty-seven hundred and fifty-five dollars underneath what we budgeted when our was. Staff recommends also, the airport advisory board did recommend last week that we made this purchase.
Does council have any questions regarding the purchase of this truck from, for J D?
The dealers from Cedar Rapids?
Yes.
So there any, who were the other bids?
The other two bids was Stivers out of Des Moines, and then McGrath, also McGrath Ford out of Cedar Rapids, also.
So we had no local?
No one local put a bid in on this, so, like, these guys have fleet specialty departments, and they send, they move a lot more vehicles, so that's usually why they convince you for nobody else, is because they just knew so many local pieces of equipment, so.
But the local dealers are always...
Everybody's open, had an option.
They just, they want, so they just, they just did it.
Right, and there's, well, I mean, even Carl Chevrolet never sent back a bid, so, I mean, there's a lot of different people, so we can send them back.
So J D, I'd like to point out that the airport is kinda self-contained. You've got your own money, it comes from rent, and
Yep.
so on, and really, the city doesn't give you any money with the airport.
Very little, yes.
Okay.
Yep, and none of this money will cause you any problems with the populace either, because that's two different funds, so J D gives us money.
Appreciate that, I can do.
But I saved you half of the second, so.
We don't provide you an airplane to fly around with or anything?
No, but you could.
Oh, thank you.
Take Dan.
I keep parking a Volkswagen to drive, too. Yes, we could.
Is there any other questions from council for J D regarding the purchase of a new pickup for the airport? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Thank you, J D.
Resolution number one nineteen, twenty twenty-five, revealing resolution number one sixty-six, twenty twenty-four, in fixing new minimum fines for specific city offenses and violations of sections of the Code of Ordinances in the city of Atomo, Iowa. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number one nineteen, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Probably Phil, you're gonna handle this?
Yeah, thank you. Section one dash six-two of the Code of Ordinances establishes the schedule of minimum fines for specific city offenses and violations of the city code. Last time that schedule was updated was last August. That was by resolution number one sixty-six dash twenty twenty-four for reference. With the recent revision of the animal code, there was a request to revise the established schedule of fines. Minimum fines have been reviewed by the city attorney with recommendation for revisions as attached to this resolution, one nineteen dash twenty twenty-five. And so, at the last meeting, the third reading of the ordinance was waived, and the ordinance was passed, so that is why this is coming for you tonight. Initially had assumed that the third reading would be tonight, and then this would go along with that, so we're a little bit behind, but with the adoption of this, it'll bring everything into line, and any of the tickets that are written going forward then would be using this revised fine schedule.
Do you have any idea overall how many of these fines ever get paid by people that receive them? Are we even at fifty percent?
Probably.
We are?
Oh, yeah. It's traffic ticket.
And if they don't pay for them, then what happens?
They threaten to come get you with a warrant.
No, they have consequences, like losing their driver's license or something like that.
So have you followed through and done that with some people?
Well, it's it's generally, I think, automatic, but yeah, they
Oh, okay.
they pay them.
Okay, so that's, that's good to know, because you have fines if people don't pay them, then there's not much of a deterrent.
Yeah. So the question I had is, is a comparison. We've got this list of the new things, but I'm not familiar, and then maybe go to the app and look up and find the old numbers, so, like, for instance, you know, on obedience to an automated traffic signal, and that's very common in the red light, right? So how much did they go up approximately?
Well, this is regarding the animal.
Yeah, yeah, so this is only changing the ones that were related to the change that were made in the updated ordinance.
Okay, with the animals, huh?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so there were a couple that were added. Yeah, a couple that were added with additions in the code and violations that were recognized. And otherwise, it was, there was language in it that would talk about first offense being a certain amount, and then the second subsequent offenses being a higher amount. This would reflect all of that.
Any other questions from council for Phil regarding the new fee schedule for fines? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Resolution number one twenty, twenty twenty-five, approving Resolution number one-twenty, twenty-twenty-five, approving changes to the compensation handbook. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number one-twenty, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, and I believe our HR director, Bart Coachos, is gonna handle this?
Yes, sir, thank you. So this is, um, an update to the compensation handbook that you all have approved along with the other numbers of Solid Waste Commission, um, in yesterday's meeting. And so what this is, is it is changing page number twenty-one of the compensation handbook. Previously, we had different rates set for our landfill and recycling center contracted employees, and the Solid Waste Commission voted to make the rates for the landfill and recycling center match those of our other departments within the city. So this is just updating our records for the...
Council have any questions for Bart regarding this change? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Gavins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number one-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five, awarding a beach wave pool painting project to NP Contractors LLC of Atumwa, Iowa, in the amount of forty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number one-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Okay, our park director, Gene Ratch, he's gonna handle this.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, wave pool at the beach at Atumwa was last painted in two thousand and nineteen and needs to be painted again. City staff nailed plans and specifications to eleven. Local area paint contractors, three bids were received. Uh, bids were opened on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five at two P.M. The bids were, number one, NP Contractors, forty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Number two, JT Groups Construction, forty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And number three, Ramsey Painting, forty-nine thousand dollars. Staff recommends awarding the contractor painting the wave pool at the beach at Atumwa to the low bidder, NP Contracting. Uh, there was forty thousand dollars budgeted in the CIP for this project. The additional four thousand eight hundred dollars will be transferred from another CIP project, which is soccer complex equipment.
Any questions for Gene regarding this project? When do we wait to do the paint? It's not in the season exactly, right?
Correct.
Right, after we drain the pools, the day after the dogs swim, then we'll spend the day cleaning and, uh, fixing joints and that. Then we'll turn it over to the contractor so we can start this, as well.
Okay, thank you.
And we're not worried that forty-eight hundred dollars for the soccer equipment will, um, pull us up?
We're, we're under budget right now.
Okay.
Plus, there's some flexibility in that we're bonding for, for some work at the depot that if we, if we have to, we can take a little out of that and then time the next bond issue us to, to look up for some of that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Gene? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Gavins?
Yes.
Resolution number one-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, appointing UMB Bank of Western Point, Iowa to serve as paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and note registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number one-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
No, to approve.
Second. Okay, our finance director, Cole Don, this is all yours.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, the resolution names U, UMB Bank as paying agent, registrar for the twenty-twenty-five CIP loan issuance. As a paying agent, UMB will facilitate the appropriate payments to the lender. Uh, UMB currently serves as a paying agent for the city's other debt issuance.
Council have any questions for Cole regarding this item? Do we always go out of town to do this, uh, project?
Uh, well, there's not a lot, uh, not a lot of institutions that will handle this as a registrar. So this is, this is kind of one that everybody, I shouldn't say everybody, but a lot of cities and other, other places will use around the state as the registrar. What they do is, is they keep track of what payments are due, then they send us a notice, say, hey, we're taking this out of, out of your account to pay the, the interest, pay the principal. Uh, and so then they handle it. Uh, we just have to make note in the financial system and, and enter it that way.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Do they cost us, cost us much to use these folks? They're sure...
Um, they're, they're, they're in the fee to it. Um, but it, it's, for each bond, maybe more between five hundred to a thousand dollars a year for the service. So it, it, it isn't, um, it, it isn't a huge amount. Um, but, uh, that, again, that's something that every city has and, and incurs, is that, is that administrative fee there or what's that? Um, we can levy for that, and that's part of when, when we certify the, the debt service levy. That's included within it, but again, it's anyone from five hundred to a thousand dollars, uh, for a year.
And how many of those bonds will we do in a year?
Oh, we, we only do, try, only do one every couple of years.
Okay.
Uh, but we currently have, uh, I think, seven or eight bonds that are outstanding at the moment, plus, um, uh, Iowa Finance Authority for the SRF loan. Um, and UMB also handles the, the payments on those as well.
Well, these don't come up all at the same time, or?
Yeah, well, they, actually, the, the, the payments, the bond and principal payments tend to come up at the same time. You, you, you do a principal payment mid-year, and then you do a principal and, uh, I'm sorry, interest payment mid-year, and then a principal and interest payment at the end of this one year.
Okay.
So those are usually, uh, November, December, May, June.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council for Cole? Okay, if not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Gavins?
Yes.
Resolution number one-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five, approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the issuance of five hundred and fifty thousand general obligation capital loan notes, series twenty-twenty-five B, and levying a tax to pay the notes and approval of the tax exemption certificate. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number one-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Don.
Thank you, your honor. The resolution approves the loan agreement for the twenty-twenty-five D CIP loan issuance. Additionally, it provides for a levying of taxes to be, uh, to pay for said note and approves the tax exemption certificate for the loan. As part of the fiscal year twenty-six budget process, resolution thirty, twenty-twenty-five is adopted, authorizing the pre-levy of the debt service taxes for this loan, so that way it was, um, uh, we could actually levy for that money. What this does is this, uh, provides the county auditor with the debt schedule. Uh, it's needed to help keep track of, so every year when we turn in our budgets, she matches that up to what, um, uh, what we enter into the budget form to the debt schedule so that evidence holder...
Okay. Any other questions for Cole? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Gavins?
Yes.
Resolution number one-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five, authorizing the mayor to sign a surety release and agreement to receive payment from State Farm Fire and Casualty Company from a bond on a contractor who did not complete work in the city right of way. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number one-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
All right, thank you, mayor. So, uh, a contractor did not restore the right of way as required by city code at, for, performing work in the right of way. Uh, they were contacted multiple times over the last period and made no attempts to, uh, rectify the problem. Uh, this matter was discussed with the city attorney, who recommended, uh, and then we agreed it was the best course of action, uh, to call their bond. So, uh, rate quotes were sent out to five contractors, who received two, two quotes. Uh, comps that are attached, uh, Wayne is excavating, provided the lowest quote at thirty-seven hundred dollars to, uh, complete the restoration of the right of way. Uh, the surety release and agreement form from State Farm Fire and Casualty Company, who are the, the bonding company for the contractor, um, will provide a payment of thirty-seven hundred dollars to reimburse the city for this work. They just require, uh, we sign this release before they'll provide the check.
Hopefully this doesn't happen very often.
This, in ten years, I'm sure, is the first time I think it's happened.
Yeah.
For some I've been involved with it.
Was it a disagreement on how it was supposed to be done, or?
No, they just didn't do it.
They just walked away.
They did some plumbing work and then left the sidewalk unrepaired and left, like, excavation material in the right-of-way rocks and stuff like that to right-of-way, just never, never cleaned it up.
So that's likely to be a contractor we wouldn't use going forward or what?
Yeah, so I think our, what we can do is ban them from working in the right-of-way for a number of years and if it's agreeable to the city council to proceed with this bond, um, surety release. Um, that's our next step, we're gonna, we're gonna write them a letter and ban them from the right-of-way for a set period of time.
So we do have a process for that, though, that's...
It's...
For, like, if we have a contractor who doesn't complete work, we have a process of what that looks like, how long it can be?
Yeah, they're supposed to restore the right-of-way in like two weeks.
Okay.
Uh, they're supposed to clean it up and restore it so whatever wasn't made, started the work, and this contractor will get it.
Sorry, maybe I didn't, I confused, I meant for like, if we have a contractor who's not doing what they're supposed to, we do have a process in place that we don't need to create, um, so that they can't come back and do it.
Yep.
Okay.
How long would that be, we would not allow them to bid on?
In the past, I looked at something that was been between one to three years. We haven't decided how long yet. This is their kind of first offense, probably probably a full three years, um, but...
I guess if they just walked away, that's pretty disrespectful, so...
Yeah.
One to three years is a slap on the wrist, I'd make it ten.
I think we have some limitation as far as how long we can deem someone as an unresponsive or irresponsible bidder, or irresponsible bidder, um, and, and we'll find that out, uh, as far as that. If they're not on a list like this, then they would be able to bid for other projects, and if they're the lowest bid, then we have to go with them for public contract work.
This wasn't a city contract they didn't fulfill, they just, they were doing work for a private party.
Oh.
Some contract.
Well, no, like, when someone wants to dig up the right-of-way to fix a sewer lateral, they have to come up, come to us for a permit in order to excavate in the right-of-way. And so, our options for this, you know, to restore the right-of-way, which would assess it against the property owner, which we didn't think was right, because their fault didn't work.
Yeah.
And so we called the contractor's bond in order to pay for those fixed rights. They weren't working for us, they were working in the right-of-way for a, a third party. And we'll just, the, the, what we can do is we can ban them for getting permits to work in the right-of-way for a set number here. So if someone, they wanna do a driveway or do a sewer lateral, we'll be able to do it for that time period.
Has the city ever used this contract, this city project?
I don't believe so.
Any other questions from council? Okay, if not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Gavins?
Yes.
Resolution number one-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five, authorizing the mayor to execute one permanent sewer easement for five oh eight Meadow Street for construction of public improvements for the Lake Branch Phase Eight Division Three Sewer Separation Project. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number one-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
Thank you, mayor. So in order to construct and maintain parts of the Phase Eight Division Three Stormwater Sanitary Sewer System, um, the attached easement is required. Um, staff met and worked with this property owner, I'm explaining in detail the planned improvements. Uh, the sewer easement is perpetual and will run with the land a lot for future maintenance and upkeep of the utility infrastructure. Uh, the current sewer easement will be filed and reported at the Waukegan County Reporters Office once it is signed.
As I understand the right, these people are gonna get a thousand eighty dollars to have that permit inside of the city?
Yes.
Does council have any questions for Phil regarding this project? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Gavins?
Yes.
Resolution number one-twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five, approving a second amendment of lease agreeing up between the city of Atumwa and the Iowa Department of Administrative Services for the CASA program. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number one-twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second. Phil, I believe you're gonna handle this?
Yes, General Mayor. Uh, this lease is a renewal lease on behalf of and for the benefit of the Iowa Department of Inspections and Appeals, Child Advocacy Board of CASA Program.
Not, um, that department of Health and Community Services.
That's right, it's changed. Sorry, I took it from the old one, uh, where it was under that last time. It changed. Uh, yeah.
Yep.
Um, the program has been operating out of rooms three-hundred and three-oh-one at City Hall, uh, prior to the construction project. Uh, and while that construction project was going on, they had been asked to vacate the building as we have. Uh, and so this lease would continue the operations from September one, twenty-twenty-five through August thirty-one, twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, the current lease is technically set to expire August thirty-one of twenty-five. Uh, but without them being in the building, uh, we had agreed to, uh, push out, uh, for the, the two-year period there and hold the city rent safe place for that time when they weren't in the building. Um, second amendment to the lease agreement is attached with the summary for reference.
What's the dollar now? I didn't see it.
No, it's, it's in the original lease, uh, and I don't remember, it's like two dollars and something per square foot, and it's calculated out as part of that. I do not have it with me, but it's, it's holding that same, uh, lease that it was from before.
So it's not in two square feet for the two rooms?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and this is only, um, extending out the, the timeframe of what that, uh, changed. Nothing else is changing, just the, uh, the termination date.
Council have any questions for Phil regarding this lease? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Gavins?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is the public forum. Does anybody have anything they'd like to, uh, present to the council tonight regarding any non-agenda items? Okay, if not, we will move on to mayor or city council reports or communications. I don't have anything particular that I want to communicate, but does any of the council have any messages or communications they wanna make?
Yes, I do. So I just wanna talk about the lease, the Naval, Atumwa, Iowa Naval Air Station Wings and Wheels. Is there, it's held on September, wow, September Saturday, July nineteen twenty point five, and it will be at the Naval Air Station Museum. Um, the event, there will be a flight breakfast, breakfast from seven to nine A.M., and then starting at eleven, there will be a car show, food trucks, vendors, live music. Um, the two box will play from twelve to two, and fusion from four to seven. Um, but the headliner is Letters From Home. J.D., what time will that be at?
It's gonna be around two fifteen, two thirty.
Two fifteen, two thirty.
And the breakfast is at the airport? At the airport, um, you see.
Yep. There's some really great flyers going around, um, and I'm sure that Travis would love to put this on Facebook for everyone, too, correct? Thank you. So, and if you have questions, you know, J.D. would love to answer any of those questions.
Okay.
J.D., do you have anything you wanna add to what councilwoman just said?
It is, it's a fundraiser for the Naval Air Station Museum. I mean, we're, we're gonna do the breakfast at the airport, we do an annual flying breakfast, so we're gonna do it at the airport this year instead of at the museum, but everything after, and then breakfast be from seven to nine, and then everything else will be over at the museum.
Okay.
And there's a bunch of pancakes. The pancakes are phenomenal, and the whole event was a great time last year, too, so I recommend everyone to go.
And any particular reason to move the dining from the museum to the airport?
So have you been to the museum?
Yeah.
It, it does have the elevator in the back, but our airport's a lot more handicap accessible for veterans and stuff like that, so it's just, everything's on ground level, makes it less, uh...[1771.65]
Okay.
And they, and they can go to the museum after that, or the museum will be open all day, so.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Does council have any other communications that they'd like to make to the public? About anything? All right. If there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn our city council meeting.
I'll move.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
They'll be here.
Councilmember Gavins?
Yes.
We are adjourned and thank you, everybody, for coming to the Atoma City Council meeting this evening and take care of us all.